Good afternoon and welcome to the city of Helen and City County joint session. May thirteenth, twenty twenty four, five thirty three A M. Meeting is called for. Adam Burke.
City manager Barkley.
Yeah.
City commissioner Dean.
Yeah.
City commissioner Logan.
Your.
City commissioner Reed.
Here.
City commissioner Shirtless.
Your.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
County commissioner Lunt.
Here.
County commissioner Payne.
Here.
County commissioner Roth.
Here.
County chief administrative officer Balt.
Here.
Minutes for three, on fifth, twenty twenty four received. Do we have any corrections? Additions? If not, the minutes will stand as submitted. Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, just wanted briefly bring up an item that I think there's a little bit of discussion. Um, so I can't remember whether it was a Saturday or Sunday afternoon, I think that was Texas people that live in the county. Saying, why am I being allowed to work on Sydney issues? And so, uh, I think since then, we found that there's, in other words, there were. Their ballots, uh, I guess look identical binding to the residents and, and, uh. I get, we've set's got an update, uh, briefly from our city clerk and I was just wondering if, um. Maybe there's more information out there about how. Ballots are going to be handled, given the timeliness of primary. You. There is any.
At first, first I'd heard of it. I, I was, we were at National County. Conference last week. Um, so I didn't, hadn't even heard that that happened. I don't know anything about it. Mr. Balt, you hear this?
Uh, yes, um. Of course, Amy Reeves and Potter Fitzpatrick would be our experts to speak to this. That's, uh, it's my understanding that there was a mistake made. And some mailings made to three different precincts. Which they are in the process right now of correcting as quickly as they can with some additional mailings that are going to go out. To, uh, but absolutely, that did occur. And, uh, they're working on it now. That's. I don't know much more about it than that.
Dave, you got anything you want to say? Sorry for putting you on the spot.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, commission, uh. I spoke with the elections officer earlier today. Uh, it's my understanding, or not to speak for the county, but just to get an update. As I was getting questions from the city commission on the matter. Um, it's my understanding that they now have the ballots, fresh ballots for those three precincts coming from billings. Uh, a local printing operation Allegra, it's in the process of printing those envelopes. They have a process that they've. Created a place to validate those, um. Those ballots that would come back from those three precincts. So they have a plan of action in place.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Support services and nine one one. Police chief Brett Petty, you have the floor.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you. We will be presenting the, uh, nine one one center and the record section budget. I will turn over here as soon as we get this. Up and running over to the nine one one operations manager, Zach Slattery.
Awesome.
Okay. All right. You're great to go. Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, uh, so as the chief said, I'm gonna present on the SSD budget. Um, so there's two funding sources out of that. Uh, there's two one nine, two one eight. Um, so just quickly about both of those. Um, so two one eight, um, they, and two one nine both work together to fund the records fund as well as the nine one dispatch center. Um, two one eight is funded strictly by the state of Montana from the nine one piece that are collected, uh, from home bills. Uh, that allocation is, uh, given quarterly to, uh, the department to support our operating costs for that. And then two one nine is funded by the public safety mill levy. Uh, specifically for the operations, uh, specifically for salaries. Um, just a quick thing for, uh, FY twenty five, the public safety mill levy, um, is providing us four point five one percent of that mill levy to fund our, uh. The, uh, yeah, salaries for that. Um, and then just one other thing we like to highlight on that is, uh, our center is fully staffed actually for the first time. Uh, in numerous years, um, and that includes people that are actually out of training. I don't actually have anybody on training right now, so we are fully staffed with that. Um, so breaking down just a little bit further, jumping into the two one nine support services, uh, budget. Again, this covers the operating costs, uh, personnel costs for that. Um, so right now for the nine one center, it's, uh, we have two nine one, uh, managers, so myself and our programming manager. Uh, covers the one public safety system administrator, our version of IT. Uh, fourteen dispatch positions, um, and then four point five record staff. Uh, members, which I believe will be custody, advertising one position, um, due to, uh, resignation slash retirement in one of them. Um, so the allotted four point five one percent that goes into two one nine, uh, from the public safety mill levy, um. Is however, creating a little bit of a budget shortfall for us, um, because it's not quite covering, uh, the full salary costs that I need to pull from that. Um, so that is being made up by my cash reserves, um, that you'll see for the estimated beginning and ending cash that, um, that's projected with that. Um, I do know the chief and the county administrator, um, had been in discussions about that, trying to figure out. A solution down the road for that. Uh, couple of little expenditures, uh, for the two one nine is, uh, at the time the slide was created, it was based on a four percent. Um, for cost of living increase, uh, the union contract, their collective bargaining agreement for the dispatch center does open in twenty twenty five. Um, and then again, the continuing to supplement the salaries, using cashers for that. All right, jumping into two one eight, um, this one does have a little bit, looks like there's more cash reserve in there than there really is. So this account does include the one point five or so million, uh, for the cat R M S project that would be allotted or expended this year. Um, we are still in the middle of that build out process, but I believe that's an April of twenty five go live. Um, date for that. So really the balance would be four hundred and twenty seven thousand. It's going to be in there after that's expended. Um, I did have three capital play projects I was looking at this year. Um, for our central square phone system, um, the system currently we budgeted about a hundred and ninety thousand for that. Um, the system we operate has about a three to five year brief, they call it a refresh. Um, to make sure their servers, our servers are the most up to date to keep operating. Um, our program manager and our system administrator, uh, for, just actually got back from Texas with their main conference. Um, they are moving to hopefully maybe a cloud based environment, um, so that cost may be a little bit lower. Um, we've expressed our interest in. Uh, joining them, they're basically a trial version for their cloud based service on that. So I'm hoping we can do a little bit of cash, cash savings on that. Um, but the current system was installed in twenty twenty one, so we are within that timeframe of needing to start to look at the refresh for the system. Um, our desks, um, if you haven't been out to our center, the desks we have are specifically designed for nine one centers. So they come with this fairly significant cost to replace. Um, currently those desks are the ones we've had since, uh, I believe twelve years ago, when we moved into our current location out of the airport property. Um, and then just our request for the handheld radios, um, for a backup redundancy. Um, that was highlighted when we had issues with one of our main radio sites falling out. Uh, we utilize the radios that we currently have, but they're ones that have been cycled through the SO and the PD. Um, and basically give them to us to operate on. They do the job, but not as great as they should. They don't get everything with the programming that they have. I do believe the chief may have a different, possibly a plan in place to try to save that money as well. If he wanted.
Yeah, for the backup rear, the handheld radios that are, uh, the PD, the SO, I've talked to the sheriff, we may have. One or two of those radios that we have that we're not currently using. Bring out to the dispatch center to where they could use to save us the, I think it's, they run about nine thousand a piece and they need four radios. Thirty six thousand, not that we have extra radios laying around, but. We'll know where they're at, especially if we need them, but for that redundancy portion and when their radios go out on the. Uh, on the desk there, it's important to have those so they still have radio contact.
I was gonna say, that was, that line that unless you wanted to touch on.
Yep. So one other thing, mayor commissioners, um, with that, uh, beginning cash, you'll see it just flow over two point one million. Uh, we receive seven hundred and fifty thousand from each commission. Uh, for the ARPA funds for the CAT RMS project. On top of that, he's telling the, uh, the city of East Holland being fifty thousand dollars towards that project. We're gonna use that fund, um, for running fiber out to the center, because right now we don't have a. A dedicated fiber line to go out to the center. And with the bandwidth that the new CAT R M S system, uh, dictates. It's way above what capacity is out there. So to have that dedicated fiber is gonna help us a ton. From what I'm hearing from. The IT staff, my staff is, uh, that would create another level of redundancy out there. So when it does go down, we'll have some fail safes in place. So. Um, that rough cost now to, uh, put fiber out there is thirty three thousand. Um, and then, uh, that fifty thousand cover the installation of fiber plus also three years of service. Uh, because you gotta pay a monthly fee, of course, for that fiber. Nothing's free. As we know. Is there anything else on that? I think the last slide is questions. So, questions about this budget, sir?
Manager Burke, thank you, Mayor. Zach, chief. The SSD board did recommend approval of the city and county commission. Come as a questions for chief Bennett. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. In capital outlets, is phone refresh, is that the fiber you're collecting about?
No, that was what, uh, Zach touched on. Uh, first about the, uh, phone system out there. Um, needing to be refreshed. We're within that timeframe, five years, I think we thought it's out to twenty six. We'd like to get it done. Part another, part of another reason for that refresh too is. We have a new CAT RMS system. I believe our phones will work. It's with the current CAT RMS system, but we're about a year out from needing that software update.
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, two questions. First on the fiber, so since it's not, that eighty thousand mark, you should go out. For an R P to do that, or is that something that happens in-house?
Thank you. Great question. As far, yeah, I think we'll have to report back on that. But I will get you my answer soon.
Mayor Commissioners, I, I know that they did do, um, a cost analysis. Um, with that, it is below the eighty thousand, so there's no requirement to formal, formal bid on that. Um, and they did, they did company and they had looked at other options and this was the option that was the most feasible and. And cost effective for what they needed. And so we'll be expending that, that money out of the fiscal twenty four budget. Um, using, using the cash reserves where we received that deposit of the fifty thousand for the stolen. So that will come out of this year's budget.
And if I could add one more thing to that. One thing going with, uh, the fiber that we were looking at now. The other companies that were reached out to was very far out from getting it in. And we're, implementation for the CAT RMS, we're hoping by the end of the year, probably early spring, but there's a chance we wouldn't even have fiber. Even then.
Um, my other question is, Mayor, when, what is our goal life for the, that cloud based system operating?
My question.
Too early as now.
Uh, our goal life is projected April of twenty twenty five.
Any other questions for chief Bennett? Not, we'll move along. Pass. Is valid persistent directive, not keep you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I think, uh, my deputy is coming in. So, um. As we presented to you previously, this, um. This budget has been submitted to M D T for under the. The grant funding and has been accepted, but, um, for this budget presentation, we just wanted to go back over it for you again. Um, you know, revenues, our allocations are one point four million. Contributions, about a half a million and fares are right around fifty five thousand. Um, for total of roughly two million dollars, um, no increase over the FY twenty four. Expenses, one point two million, operations are about seven hundred thousand and capital is about a hundred thousand. So for a total expense of one point nine million dollars. I'll be give some of them. Um, notable.
Uh, so Mayor Commissioners, that, uh, cash flow AC at the bottom there, the eighty seven. Our personnel number that's in this presentation, um, didn't include the estimate for a cola. So I think it's about thirty. Nick, I think the cola that's gonna be in our overall presentation eventually. Uh, is about thirty thousand dollars for like the transit, so that it would really be more somewhere around fifty thousand dollars. Transit's a little funny because it's on the reimbursement schedule, so our, our cash balance is healthy, but sometimes it's. Pretty close to the line while we're waiting for reimbursement, so. Uh, every once in a while, it is nice to put a little bit in the bank just to make sure that we don't go to the red while we're waiting for getting on like that. That's your, yes.
Um, notable changes, moving into this next fiscal year, adding a part time operator to address increasing services. Um, changing the payment processor to reduce transaction fees. And then shifting from the fifty three eleven to fifty three oh seven funding. Instead, instead of us being a sub recipient, will now be a direct recipient of the F T A. That was part of the whole N P O process. Um, that was part of some of the things that changed. When we became an N P O, transit now is, can be a direct recipient of the funds. And I think those are just some of the other changes that the N P O. Uh, are result of.
So Mayor Commissioners, the, the first part, we'll add a little bit, um. At last. Before we get to county increase by about ten thousand dollars, their contribution to transit. And that was for us to start exploring ways for us to increase the service, whether that be in. Expanded hours, a weekend day, uh, expanded area, something like that. Uh, we came back and our best way to do that was to add new bodies to be able to put out. And so that's our. Our long part time person is gonna allow us to. Start exploring the idea of what works better. Is it, you know, going a little bit later into the evening? Or having, you know, limited window, maybe on a Saturday, something like that, so. And then our, we do know our new allocation for the fifty three oh seven funding, it's, I think it's just over a million dollars. Technically, we could start pulling from that in July, uh, we're, we're eligible to start using it. We're still working, obviously, on the entire N P O process. Um, transit is no different. We're working on, there's a lot of policies and procedures, especially being a direct recipient of federal money. There's a lot of rules that we have to put in place. So we're working on all that. Our goal. Is to switch from receiving it from M D T. To receiving it from the F T A in January of next year, kind of in the middle of the year. Um, if we miss that goal, it's not a huge deal. The, just fiscal year is fully funded still on the M D T side, so we have a little buffer.
And then, um, we're always asked of where, you know, our hot spots are in the car, and this is our heat map from. Where our big drop off pickup locations are, um, you know. Pretty what you'd expect downtown, um, shopping areas and then medical offices, hospital. So. Over this past year, forty three percent, forty four percent have booked from the app. And then there's an under seventeen minute wait for rides booked as ASAP, eight, as soon as possible pickup. Um, we're down to twenty percent cancellation rate with only four percent of no shows. We were a little bit higher on the no shows, but we instituted some policies so that, um. It deterred people from do, doing the no show, which just impacts our, um, operation. And then we've had zero missed rides due to, um, no driver availability. And that, mind you, has been over the. Last six months, we've had either one, two or three drivers, um, of vacant drivers positions due to either workers comp or vacant positions, so. Staff has really stepped up and the software helps us by. Making our routes as efficient as possible so that we're picking up and dropping off and, um, moving people around the town. That's all we have. Questions that we have to ask.
Thank you, Derek. If you not keep, come as a questions for the director. Commissioner.
Are we still seeing, uh, months more than we sent riders versus leveling out?
Uh, Mayor Commission is leveled out a bit because we are currently down three drivers. So we don't have as many, um, buses out on the road. Um, but our numbers are holding pretty steady. So we expect once those drivers are, are back to, back to work that. Uh, we'll see that increase because we'll have more availability for seats.
If that's spacious.
One vacancy and, uh, two, uh, workers comp.
So, Mayor, just to, to kind of clarify that point, even though we're, we're down a couple of drivers. As, you know, our bullet point there says, we haven't had to turn anybody away. Um, so we are, anybody that books their ride is getting their ride. And even if you book it and say, I want to get picked up right now. On average, you're only having to wait seventeen minutes. The, I think the thing that our ridership is leveling off from. Is more due to the fact that because we have a few drivers missing. Um. The people that are trying to book a ride, they may not get the time slot that they're looking for. And so they may not book the ride. And so I think that's what's leveling off our ridership as opposed to. Not having the drivers to get to the people that they want. I think it's just more, they try to book it, they can't quite get it the time they want, so they just don't book it.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Derek. If you not keep. City County Building Administration Facility Director Sampson, you have the floor. Eating up your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. Um. I'll be presenting the joint, uh. Facilities budget. Um. First, I want to say that, uh, on April thirtieth, staff presented the joint. Facilities budgets to the building management advisory board. And they recommended approval. The budgets we're presenting today. Period consideration reflects status quo personnel. No cost of living adjustment, no new capital projects and no change to the square foot rental rate at either facility. The city commission will be decided on the cola in the coming weeks. At that time, we'll make any adjustments to the personnel costs. Uh, but that will not impact the square foot rate. City County Building, um. Our operations are, um, you know, this fund is, is pretty, um. Well off, um, we've got, you know, a, a operating budget that we adopted. In twenty four, you know, seven hundred and fifty eight thousand, we're projecting. Uh, a six hundred and ninety three thousand dollar. Um, operation. So we have a decrease there and that's basically due to personnel vacancies. Um, our capital, um, we're showing an increase from our adopted and that was due to project carryovers from the previous year. And then FY twenty five, uh. Notable changes, we're, obviously we're keeping our rate the same, which is twenty dollars and twenty eight cents a square foot. And. We're proposing, um. An estimated beginning cash reserve at about nine hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. We have a good capital reserve in this fund. Um, the square foot that we rent in this facility is about forty two thousand square feet. And the vacant offices, um, that we have this next year is due to the environmental health relocating out to the, uh. Murray facility. And we do have some divisions backfilling some of that empty space. Um, but we will end up about sixty nine square feet of vacant space. The city county mail operation, um, this mail operation is, um, pretty solvent. Um, we've processed approximately two hundred thousand pieces a year through our mailroom. Um. We have an estimated beginning cash reserve about a hundred and two thousand dollars. Um. Did have some increases, uh, due to personnel, uh, step increases and we, for this year, we're adding a temporary salaries line item. Uh, to help fill the gap, uh, for vacations and sick time with temporary personnel. Um. This, this fund has, um. About a hundred and two thousand dollars in, in capital reserve and the mail fund doesn't need a capital reserve. Um, so we have enough, we have about forty thousand dollars in operating reserve. It leaves us a surplus of about sixty three thousand dollars. Um. And every ten years. You know, we do have a capital purchase of usually a mail vehicle that we go around and do the route with. Um, the one that we purchased in just the last couple of years is gonna last us, you know, eight or nine more years. So, um. When we met with the building board, um, they, you know. Recommend approval of transfer of sixty three thousand dollars of capital reserves from the mail fund to the lawn justice center capital fund. Um, and that would help bolster that. Uh, capital funded lawn justice. So we can get some projects done there. So. That's it. That'll leave us about forty thousand dollars in operating reserve. Our fixed processing costs, um. Or our charges. That we built up, they're gonna remain the same as they were in F. Some will be changed then. The telecom fund, uh, kind of a, a pass through, um, so we. Answer the main city county phone lines, that's the information desk, um. It's kind of part of the phone enter. Um, it's kind of part of the phone enterprise. Um, we provide the staff, um, so the cost of those staff to answer those phones, uh, we pass that on to ITNS. Uh, and it's been fairly level um at about twenty thousand dollars a year. So we're proposing to charge the twenty thousand again this year. Uh, it's a little less than our expenditures, but we have a little reserve that covers that that. Again, uh, same people that do the mail do the phones, so we have an increased steps and uh temporary salaries budget. Lawn Justice Center. Um. Our operations budget, we have a difference about eighty-one thousand dollars uh less, you know, than adopted, and that was due to vacancy and some debt service savings, um, as we had not uh submitted for the full version of that law yet. Our capital adopted versus our projected, um, the big increase there is uh due to carryovers, uh, with the remodel project, uh, the boiler replacement project stuff is in uh the previous year was profitable, so. Notable changes for twenty-five, again, rental rates will remain the same. The rate at that facility is nineteen dollars and seventy-six cents. Um, and I just, we added this in this last year, but uh the second floor remodel project, uh criminal justice services, grants purchasing department, emergency services department, moved into that second floor, uh, and their rent increased approximately thirty-eight hundred square feet of space in term above and beyond what we were renting last. Um, we did increase our supplies and materials uh a little bit just to help us uh cover the cost of maintaining the additional office space and restaurants. We have uh four, oh, I'm sorry, five thousand four hundred and sixty square feet of vacant space in the pillar section of the building, and that is the upper floor of the pillar building, which is a hundred percent vacant right now. Um, so it gives us room for growth in the future. Over the next year, my team and I will be working on the many capital projects that are already in progress. At the same time, staff will be working on future capital improvement plan. And we'll work the city and county finance directors and the building board to identify funding methods for that plan and bring that forward in our fiscal twenty-six. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Derek Sampson. Any questions for? Thank you. HCTV Public Television. Kristen.
I did send her a message, let her know we were ahead of schedule. She said, okay, so I'm assuming she's online.
Kristen is online. She's.
Hello, good afternoon.
Hello. You have the floor.
Hello, um, I'm online that this year just joining you. I have a cold, so I didn't want to share that with anyone. My name is Kirsten Fabian. I am the Executive Director of Helena Civic Television. And we are the Community Access Channel in Helena that holds agreements with both the City of Helena and Lewis and Clark County to bring you local government meetings as as well as much other content. So we're the public education and government channel here in Helena. And so this year, we're um really pleased, and I want to thank the City of Helena for extending a multi-year contract um that they did last year. So that just makes a little more smooth sailing for us, and I hope for the City of Helena as well. Something we talked about the last couple of years, so I'm very thankful for that. And the county um contract goes until the year twenty twenty-five. So I included um our budget in the packet that I hope most of you got, and if there's any questions on that. Our budget typically um remains very steady and the same from year to year, not anticipating any other increases or um abnormalities from what um you can see in this, uh, I guess, last year's budget. And in the next two weeks, we will finalize our um fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Um, I guess, and if you saw in the notes, a little memo, I don't always do this, but this year I included some um just some of the highlights of last year. So we're or actually some were just recently completed, but really excited. We did complete a new studio set. So um our people from the public and people that come through HGTV will have a fresh new look with new furniture. And um it's just a way to really um kind of every few years, you should really look at your set and see if it's providing your needs. So this is a little more formal set, I would say. But people are still free to enhance or bring whatever materials or furnishings they like when they produce their own programs. Um, we also did last year, like a lot of groups were involved in the homelessness or the unsheltered community. So we had a lot of programming to that end, and um we I know I saw a lot of participation in our uh Why Should I Care video that was shown at St. Paul's Church, which had a panel discussion and then a Q and A at the end. So I thought there was a lot of good back and forth. And it involved a lot of the homeless or the unsheltered who came and spoke, and you could hear things from their perspective. So I thought that was a really good event. A lot of people or groups or organizations, especially nonprofits, that work through Helena Civic Television and with us um had a lot of concerns, and there was lots of conversations in the community about homelessness and unsheltered people. So I think we're working on it in Helena as best we can and just getting out um all the conversations of the groups that either offer services or have plans that comes through HGTV a lot. So I think we'll continue to do that quite a ways into the future as we all try to navigate what's coming ahead um for us, what that looks like on there. Uh, let's see, we did. Um, we do some things with um the Consumer of Securities and the, I always get their name kind of mixed up. But the Commission of Securities and Insurance, there was a lot of fraud prevention, especially for seniors, but not necessarily. There was programs for young people who may want to start a business or just need to learn more about that side of things. So working on videos with that office to get more information out and videos that they can use elsewhere as well. It's not just held up on Community Access Channel. They can take these and use them as they say fit on their social media or in presentations that they make in person. And in case of this office is a statewide office, so around the state of Montana. Um, as far as any kind of funding, we're, it's it's not any additional funding. We're just asking to hold aside or announce that we'd like to have five thousand dollars from the city and then five thousand dollars from the county, and this is the from the capital funds, those PEG funds that are collected via individual subscribers who um get cable, so they're fifteen cents per subscriber. So um just in case we need to fix something or purchase something, those are held aside in addition to our contractual fees that we get. And I had a little aside note, it's just about some legislation that's at the federal level that's concerning to us, but nothing's happening right now. It's it's just, it's an act that's called the uh American Broadband Deployment Act of twenty twenty-three. So the last time any um there was any any committee or legislative talk was in October of twenty twenty-three. But this is something that we watch because although it has a great name and it's designed to eliminate some of the um just the broadband permitting and make broadband more efficient, let's say more cable companies want to come to Helena, Montana. If this act passes, it's to facilitate so they don't have to have as much red tape or they could just kind of get access to public rights aways without a lot of local government um involvement, I'll say. So it's just something that our organization and things, our organizations of our same ilk like Natoa and even the National Association of Counties and the Alliance for Community Media, we don't see this as a very good thing. Local governments should, in our mind, always keep their mind on the public rights aways and not give that up readily, even though it sounds like a great plan to have more efficient broadband, and everybody wants it to go further and wider. But this doesn't, when you really delve into this legislation, you don't even know if it's for underserved or people that aren't being served now, that's not clear. So and again, I could provide more information on that. But it it hasn't made any um traction lately in legis in the legislature. This um, of course, at the national level, and we hope that it just kind of fades away and doesn't get any traction. So um I guess if I, if there's any questions or comments.
Yes, Director Daniel, say.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Um, uh, Kirsten, I just had the one question for you. So last year, um, you requested eleven thousand dollars out of that that PEG fee, and we set that aside for you for capital improvements, and then now you're asking for ten thousand in fiscal twenty-six. Can you update us, um, the commission on how you've spent or planned for the eleven thousand, or is this just something that you want to carry over into the next fiscal year?
Sure, um, thank you, Sheila. Um, the, we do have plans for this, and if we can turn it around really quickly before the um end of this fiscal year, we have plans to buy a new field camera and all the accessories, the batteries and different connections for it, and that only amounts to about five thousand dollars. So no, we wouldn't be spending that eleven thousand. So I I didn't realize it carried over. We just learned um in the last few years that you need to state if you intend to use any money. So it's very much speculation, but going forward into the next year, that's why I lowered it, because we're just been super lucky that equipment hasn't broken or failed. But we are looking at, there's a little bit of trouble with the signal from the city county building. And we are speculating, I'm not, hey, tech is, that it's uh maybe some boxes, there's encoders and decoders at our end, and then there's encoders and decoders at Spectrum, um, which is the cable company. So we'd like to replace those boxes, and they're about two thousand dollars each. We could get some help from Spectrum. I don't know where, if they feel like it's on their end, if they would pick up the tab, I don't know. But um, yeah, so again, we, I'd like to spend up to five of that eleven thousand we requested last year and feel fairly confident that this lower number going forward is a good number for us to reserve and just know that we may need those funds and not surprise the city or county if something was to fail.
Um, thank you, Kirsten. Yeah, I mean, we do need to um set aside the appropriations if you're intending to spend. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that I had um had clear direction from you and the commission's consent to set aside seven thousand dollars or ten thousand in fiscal twenty-five.
Okay, and that again is five thousand from the county and five thousand from the city, so. Um, if it, how you guys break it out, but I, you know, in our mind, they're two separate um.
Just to clarify that, that comes, that funding comes from um the fee, and so it goes directly to um a a restricted amount. So they're not asking for an additional five thousand from the city and the county. It's already uh distributed to that fund specifically and restricted for capital purchases for HCT.
Thanks, Eric. Any other comments or questions for? Kristen? Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I want to compliment on the, at least on the county commissioner's side, that they were in a very long meeting this morning, some with budgeting and some with their regular items. So I'm seeing some of the same faces I've seen all this morning. So job well done for a very long meeting this morning. Thank you.
Information Technology Services Director Thomas, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, member of the, members of the commission, my name is James Thomas. I'm the Director of Information Technology and Services for the city and county. Uh, presented for your review is the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five and supporting documentation. The Information Technology Board and the Information Technology Steering Committee both reviewed and endorsed this budget. We will cover our uh summary of the budget book expenses, uh summary of our cash flow analysis and our capital improvement plan. Next slide. The summary for our budget book, um, we did, I did include uh two extra fiscal years, just so you can see what we're doing to our budget. We are trying to get our budget down to a little more manageable level. Um, for all intents and purposes, our twenty-five budget is very close to our twenty-four budget. Just a couple thousand dollar difference, actually a little bit of a savings. Excuse me. Uh, so how are we maintaining our expenses for the department? Uh, go to the next slide. We are continuing to operate with thirteen full-time staff and three vacancies. Um, our budget number for our personnel does include the COLA on the county side, which is a three and a half percent COLA. At the bottom line of our budget, um, I see I should have added our revenues on there. Um, we are just short of making a balanced budget. We're short by about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Our revenues don't quite make up all of our expenses. We do have a fairly healthy cash balance right now that we can use to cover those that imbalance. Um, okay, next slide. So one of the efforts that we've done to keep a balanced budget or get closer to a balanced budget is we've gone through all of our software services and applications that we've used throughout the organization, and we've tried to consolidate those where it makes sense at once. So we compared a lot of our products that we use, um, and we determined what we could do with our Microsoft suite of tools. And the more tools we put in that Microsoft suite, uh, gave us a lot better of a of a budget, um, go ahead and hit it. So what we did is we chewed away at all of our different products. And that last one took us significant amount of time to get it taken care of. But what we found was the Microsoft suite of tools allowed us to package all of those products together and still reflect a savings. So we still have about a forty-four thousand dollar savings after we got done with all of those products. Next slide. Um, into our CIP summary, um, for the twenty-five, I summarized greatly, but I put the years of the original purchase for the products or hardware that we're going to replace. So the servers that we're looking at replacing are pushing eight years old by the time we'll get these replaced. Most server life cycles, you tend to look at five to seven years. Um, so we are definitely on the cusp of needing to replace those. We have a battery or UPS and an uninterruptible power supply that we need to replace. Um, getting very dated. We have some phone routers that uh again are getting fairly close to their end of life on that hardware. We have network switches that range from twenty-ten all the way to twenty-seventeen. So the oldest one. So the oldest ones, we want to get out of the environment as soon as possible. Um, we've got some wide area network microwave communications that we've been working on, um, and we've got a little bit left to go to get those completed. And then we've got a significant one, which is the storage area network. This provides file services, file storage for all the departments, um, and that was purchased in twenty-seventeen. So those total up to two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, uh, and change. That concludes the summary of the IT budget for twenty-five. Be happy to answer any questions.
Comments or questions for the director? I escaped my time. Any others? Thumbs up for him? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving along. Lewis and Clark Humane Society. Walton Watts.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see Kelsey's in the meeting quite yet. Um, I can email her and let her know we are slightly out of schedule.
Sure, move along. When she comes in, just let me know and we'll put her on. Youth and Adult Community Service Program, oh, sorry, Lewis and Clark Library, Director Finn. If he's on. Director Finn? Yes, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, Mayor, councilors, commissioners. Good to see you. Uh, we are presenting our fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Uh, my board was going to come, but I think we're a little ahead of schedule, so they might not be joining us. Uh, this is Michelle Turville. She is, um, our budget manager. She's new to the library, new as in a year ago. Um, Michelle has been instrumental in helping us bring aboard a new accounting software package, which has not been a fun process. Uh, we are a year into it and we are still experiencing glitches every, every week, it feels like. Uh, but I'm here to present fiscal year twenty twenty-five preliminary budget and answer any questions you might have about the library. Uh, thank you to Frank for providing, um, our mill levy projections, and we were looking at a four percent increase in the levy, uh, revenue and a slight increase in, uh, state aid per capita. Also, um, we have increased our revenue projection on interest income just based on market stabilization. We're already seeing more interest income this year than we had budgeted for. We do anticipate a handful of new hires in twenty twenty-five, uh, including a full-time human resources professional. We have been working with an outside consulting firm for, uh, human resources work, and they have recommended at this point, that we, our staff has grown so large that we, we need inside help. So we'll be hiring an HR professional in fiscal year. Um, and we have built in a three and a half percent COLA, uh, increase for staff members, just as the county. Um, our typical grant income has been budgeted, including big grant and, uh, foundation grants, uh, from the Library Foundation. We are looking at, um, close to two hundred thousand dollars in, uh, revenue coming from the Library Foundation. Um, and we continue to pay down our intercap loan from the Montana Board of Investments. Uh, we are now down under one million dollars, uh, that we owe them. We're at about seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We've budgeted, um, principal and interest payments, uh, for this coming year, and we've also budgeted money to be moved into the depreciation reserve fund at the end of the year. At the end of the year, any unspent, um, revenue that we have, we move into a depreciation reserve fund, which allows us to take care of capital improvements at all of the branch libraries. That's how we put a new roof on the building. That's how we did our remodel project, and we're going to be replacing some HVAC equipment at the main library this coming year using the depreciation reserve fund. Um, our board right now consists of our Chair, Marcy Lewandowski, our Vice Chair, Helen Fondrick. Uh, Helen represents the county. She is out of East Helena. Nikki Werthe is a city appointee, Judy Meadows is a city-county appointee, and Ron Waterman is a county appointee. We are at just over fifty staff members right now at all of the branch locations. Uh, it's a mix of full and part-time, mostly part-time. Um, I think we're at about twenty-four, twenty-five FTE right now. And then, line by line in the budget, I don't think you want me to do that, but if you have questions, I'd be happy to, uh, answer any of those questions. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Derek. Comments or questions for the director? Yes, it was split.
Wow, so thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Adam, do we have, um, Lewis and Clark, you need?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I have an email stating that Kelsey is logging in now. I don't see her quite yet, but I do see one of the board members.
Okay. Youth and Adult Community Service Program Supervisor McNeil, is he around?
Mr. Mayor, RJ is not online. Uh, let me see if he's off.
Do you have, um, do you have, uh, Ms. Mase, right, for historic preservation?
We do. Give me just a moment, Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
Kathy, can you hear us?
Okay, there we go. Yeah, Pam's on her way right now.
Presenting you of Pam.
No, Pam is coming. Pam and Greg McNally.
Um, Mr. Mayor, while we are waiting, uh, through various presenters, I did have a question. It's not one of the presentations, um, I think because it's not there, but I had asked about the housing navigator position that used to be shared between the city and county. Um, and I, I received an answer from community development that the county was no longer funding half of that position. Um, and so the city was also not going to fund half that position. Uh, we did receive an email this afternoon that there are nonprofits who are applying for grants, um, and that naturally be very valuable to them. So I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for us to revisit that discussion, um, either at another meeting or some other way. Is there is interest in resuscitating the joint contributions to that position?
Cool, they're just coming. Um, thank them for bringing that up. I think that, um, maybe I don't know this, but, um, part of the reasoning for reducing that at some point, but nonprofits picking a job to grant to pick up that service would rock. So, yes. At least that's what I remember, but I'd like to learn, look into it, learn more about it. It's, uh, true that this thing, that's, I think, and the following purchasing director would know that, so we can get back to the commission about that. You bet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If, um, for Manager Burton, if we could, when we have community development, right, there's an opportunity in our next meeting to see what the possibilities are on our side, maybe we can all send you back. Thank you.
Uh, we do have the Humane Society on now.
You put them to the police.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Okay, I'll get started. Um, I'm going to share my screen so I can show you our presentation. All right, um, so we'll just get started by looking at our cash flow sheet. Um, a couple of things I just wanted to highlight. So in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we received a really large contribution that kind of skewed this number. Um, this was a funder that gave us a hundred thousand dollar grant because they were dissolving. Um, but otherwise, we've kind of stayed on track, um, with our financials this year, and then our budgeting for next year, the trend is following the same. Um, our largest cost in expense is going to be our personnel budget. I know, like everyone else, we're feeling, um, the, the stress about making sure that we can recruit and retain, um, high-quality individuals, um, to work at the Humane Society, so that you'll see that number going up. Um, this year, we're asking for a six percent increase, um, which is the same that we requested last year. Um, so that is all that information, and then I'll go over to some of our numbers. Um, so one of the things, if you haven't listened to us before, so we provide the stray animal contract as well as housing any animals from the city and county that are safekeeping. So if their owner goes to jail or if they are incarcerated, or if they're incarcerated or if they go to the hospital, um, we're in charge of providing emergency housing for them. And then we do cruelty cases, obviously. So as it's working its way through the court system, we'll hold on to those animals as well. And then we do quarantine. So if there's a bite, um, case and the animal cannot quarantine at home, they'll come into the Humane Society. Um, and we'll hold on to them for the city and the county. And then we receive animals through abandonment. So they're left in an apartment building, um, and the police get involved or animal control gets involved, and they'll bring them into the Humane Society. And stray, and then owner turn in. So stray is just at large. They're running around the community, and they need to be picked up until they can be reunited with their family, or they can be, um, placed up for adoption. Um, so one of the things I like to point out is that while less than fourteen percent of our annual funding comes from the city of Helena and Lewis and Clark County contract, um, it accounts for over eighty-six percent of our intakes. Um, if you look down here, these are just some numbers that we put out for you guys, um, so that you can kind of see what's happening down at the Humane Society. The majority of our animals that come in are dogs and cats. Um, we do get an occasional rabbit or, you know, oftentimes guinea pigs, um, occasionally birds and reptiles, but for the most part, it's dogs and cats. Um, this shows you the usage of Lewis and Clark County and then City of Helena versus Jefferson County and then our other. I'm sorry, what was that? I'm sorry, what was that?
No question. You continue.
Perfect, perfect. Um, yeah, it shows us your usage as well as, um, the other areas that we contract with. Um, this gives you specific animals to, that came into the shelter through City of Helena, um, and there were the reasons that they came into our shelter, and then also their outcomes. Same for Lewis and Clark County. And then our overall summary of animals that came into the shelter. In twenty twenty-three, we took in about sixteen hundred animals. Um, and we had a ninety-eight percent live outcome release rate, which is huge. Um, we're very proud of that, and that's because of our foster program as well as our incredible community supporting us with donations, volunteering, um, and then, of course, adopting. Do you have any questions for me about the Humane Society or anything that's going on?
Any questions or comments for the Humane Society? To the manager.
Mayor, we did not include the six percent in the previous budget. Um, we need direction.
Um, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I estimated a three percent increase over the prior year, and we need direction from the City Commission to increase that if you like. Do you know what the request is?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, Director Daniel, sitting here. I'm sure this, well, he wants, what is the amount? Of, if we've included three percent, what is the additional amount called that?
It, right now, I have, uh, seventy-two thousand, and it appears as though they're asking this lady for, sorry, I got, I'll just start.
I can pull it back up for you. There you go.
Thank you. Um, they're asking for seventy-four thousand, one hundred and five dollars.
Issue?
Um, so it'd be an additional two thousand, one hundred and five dollars if we went with six percent.
Mr. Mayor, I will support the six percent. The class to give the exceptional work they do in the amount of work we generate.
Do you have the directions?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
We don't have. Where's the money going to come from?
It's coming from us.
Okay, she knew the total. Are they asking for anything more from the county?
You need to refer to questions to her.
Oh, well, I can't see the, it's printout, it has financial information there.
Mayor, Commissioner, I, um, I might defer that question to, um, Roger and, and, um, Frank to see what they budgeted for the county.
I couldn't, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So, Commissioner, yes, they are requesting a six percent increase according to this slide we're seeing today.
Well, I, I can't see it. So where is our six percent?
Understood. So as we discussed this morning at our budget meetings, we will see a, we've seen already a number of requests for increases or some additional discretionary spending. When we have our final work session, probably in early June, we will list all of those out and we'll go through those requests. That's, that's our attending process.
Okay. Nobody expects a decision today.
Not even.
Thank you. I'm not ready to make a decision.
Okay. Any other comments for Humane Society? Not, we'll move along. Youth and Adult Community Service Program, RJ McNeil. You have the floor. So, please.
Okay. Twenty twenty-three was a pretty consistent year for both the Community Service Office and the Community Services Office worked. So community service hours done by adults this last year was a little lower than average compared to the year before, but not much. And the number of adults doing hours each month has been really consistent over the last three years between nineteen and equal. The hours done by juveniles was a little higher, about the same margin as the adults had decreased. So, uh, and actually, the juvenile hours done, it's gone up a little bit each of the last three years. So resulting in the grand total for twenty twenty-three was really close to twenty twenty-two. The monthly average of hours done was within six hours, and the number of people each month was actually exactly the same on average, about forty-two. And I'll also note, I think I said this a year ago, but some of the community service workers have gotten jobs at some of the sites. I know, like the Food Chair, Good Samaritans, the Guardian Apartments, East Helena City Hall. I know have, maybe still have employees that started out as a community service worker, so I just think that's pretty cool. For the Victim Services Office, I don't have the exact totals, but the net total number of cases, completions, referrals, it was really similar to the previous year. I do have the number of counseling hours done at the Violence Prevention and Air Management Groups, and that was really similar to twenty twenty-two within about three hours a month, and the, uh, those numbers were really the highest the last couple of years that they have been in the past eight years. So that's good, that people are attending those hours, try to prevent further bad situations. In terms of fees collected, I noticed, uh, I noticed community service fee actual fiscal year twenty twenty-three was about five thousand higher than the previous year. So that's encouraging. And then Victim Services Office fees were really similar, within a couple hundred dollars. And all the members are black, no red. So. Are there any questions?
Let's just go. Mr. McNeil. Move along to Historic Preservation, Operation. Officer Arturo, you have.
Thank you. I have my budget request for twenty-four, twenty-five is a little bit higher than last year's. One of the things that we're requesting additional funds for are other purchases and contracted services. We're asking for one thousand eight hundred twenty dollars over last year's budget. And these are for the following. We are requesting eighteen thousand for historic preservation works. This is Paul Putz, who was a former historic preservation officer. He has been working on historic records for historic districts that listed in nineteen seventy-two. And no site forms were ever prepared for them ever. So we've been working on them over the past several years. So that is one thing he has produced about hundreds so far, and we have about a hundred more to go. And the other amount is six thousand one hundred and twenty thousand. For Preserve Montana to complete the Lincoln Cemetery gray fence repairs. And also historic signage that's required by the U.S. Forest Service M O A. And the last thing is two thousand four miscellaneous contracted work for a total of twenty-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Also, we're asking for additional funds for regular salaries. The current position for the Historic Preservation Office worker is funded six hours per week and we're finding it difficult to get work done. Between the two of us, we work thirty-six hours. So there's less than, that less than one full-time position. So we're asking to bump that up to the six hours up to ten. And the cost of that would be three thousand five hundred forty dollars. And in order to accommodate that, we are decreasing the temporary salaries, which was ten thousand dollars to five thousand dollars. We're also asking for five hundred and seventeen dollars additional money for a volunteer who showed up. It's an excellent job writing all kinds of articles about Helena in the I R, if you've been able to catch them. So that would be for volunteers, computer network access and email because it's for them to scan things and without a computer to download onto. And assign it in email. And below that, you see some, some data about hours. I know I, I believe, Mayor, you've commented that there's a distinct difference in hours between how much we spend on the city versus county projects. You know, by the fact that, by the fact that we are located within the city, we get a lot of a lot of calls and inquiries. Also, all the historic districts, the majority of historic districts are located in, within Helena. So it's, there's a state difference. And this year, we're a little lower. Part of that is we have a Unionville School Project, which is a county project. It's been taking up an enormous amount of time this past year. Also, I don't have Kathy Maseville's hours in here, who is my, the person who helps me out in the office. So she spends actually all of her time on city projects. She doesn't do many county projects. So you don't see her numbers in here. And the third thing is that, per the planning director, we've been asked to maintain our working hours as budgeted. And what you see in the prior years is going beyond what I the hours that I usually would. I don't work overtime because I work thirty hours a week, but I will work up to almost forty hours a week or more in the past. So that's when you see those numbers there. It's a little bit of a difference this year, difference this year. And just give me some updates, some things that, as I said, mostly, in Unionville has, as the county commission knows, has dominated my work as far as county stuff this past year. As far as city, we've had, we've worked with Chris Brink on revising the demolition ordinance, which took a fair amount of time. To the point of getting it to the, I think it's scheduled for a commission meeting. We have a number of building division reviews of project reverts and other changes to the buildings that are like I mentioned, those historic property records take a fair amount of time. I have to review them once they come in from Paul. It can be anywhere from five to thirty pages long. The Ford Farm Historic District, so there's a county, county historic district. And there's a piece of land that's located in a subdivision. It's parkland. And it's the Ford Farm Cemetery. So that was nominated to be increased, to increase the boundary line of the Ford Farm Cemetery and the Cooney Home. Just, the Cooney Home is already listed on the National Register. And it's a county property, was a county property at the time. Located in the county. And so now the district's going to be expanded to include a non-continuous piece of property that is the Ford Farm Cemetery. And Judge Swingley kind of initiated this. This was something he brought to my attention over a year ago. That the area was being used for people to bring their dogs there. And he thought it was rather disrespectful. And he will be actually purchasing a sign once we hear back. Whether the keeper of the record for the National Register will include this. So just last week, we had a meeting with the State Review Board, Historic Preservation Review Board, and they referred it up to the keeper generally in Montana. Once it passes through that, that body, it will generally be listed. And then the last thing that we have spent quite a bit of time on, both in city and county, is the Archives Project. And we had Pacific Coast Conservation come through. Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, just needed a question before she. When I recall, we, last during our FY twenty-four budget, we had, the city had increased our our allocation. Is that accurate?
Mayor Commissioner, Dean, yeah, we, we budgeted for sixty thousand dollar contribution. They're, they've been working with Director Brink on getting some work done. And I think Director Brink can elaborate a little bit more on that. But we did budget sixty thousand. Fund the Historic Preservation Office in fiscal twenty-four. And then in fiscal twenty-five, I was presented with an estimate of sixty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars. And then this request would add another seventeen hundred and seventy dollars to their allocation. And I would need direction from the commission on that additional allocation as well.
Okay, one thing, it's a final page of our packet. It still has our FY twenty-four budget is twenty thousand. So I think there's an error in our, what was in the packet.
You see that there? On page one, four to three.
Yes, we see that there. I think it was just a certainty of whether we were going to be budgeted that amount. And so.
I just, I mean, last fiscal year.
Correct.
So, Mayor, please, we did budget twenty thousand. Potentially, if we've got the interlocal agreement updating sixty. That's where we're at right now. The preliminary budget this year represents a movement to fifty-fifty. I don't know that the county commission has. But we withheld the increase last year until we get through the process of updating the demolition ordinance and. Any other comments or questions? Director Danielson needs direction on this. I don't have a problem with it. I don't know where the commission is at, but I personally think it's okay for the seventeen hundred.
And I'm not sure where the county is on.
Is that?
Additional F T E increase either, so.
The amount you're requesting is that just city portion or the total?
Mr. Mayor, Greg McNally, Director of Community Development, Department of Commissioners. Just wanted to indicate here in the memo here, in the numbers, obviously, joint mission, joint budget discussion here. So we're talking about both commission and the mayor here for a discussion. But we've provided two options here. One is a request with the funding for the additional hours that we're asking for. And one without those hours, just out of the concern that you may or may not be interested in funding those additional hours. And to, just to speak briefly to Mr. Burton's statement about the demolition department, interlocal agreement, we have been discussing those. And as Mr. Tardo indicated, we're moving forward. We've provided a revised demolition ordinance for you folks to consider. And Mr. Brink and I have been working on some amendments here to our interlocal agreement. We've been trading back and forth some some changes, potential changes for consideration.
Yes, the mayor is part of the city commission wrap-up. We, at the staff level, will be communicating. So when, when we get into our final budget discussion, we'll be able to represent. I think where we're both at it. I need to do that today, to wrap up to both sides. Yes.
Thank you. Just a quick question. So we have the the two options, the with additional hours and without. Do either of these budgets include cola on either side?
Mayor Commissioner, I, I have, we budgeted sixty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars. Based on the information that I was provided from the county. So that includes their estimated three point five percent cola for that department.
So the total possible increase that is different than what you knew Director Danielson would be to sixty-four thousand, that is the final possible increase. It won't go up again.
That's my understanding that that is their final request.
Suppose.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe I can just offer a couple of comments to everyone. So we do things slightly different in the city, the county. It's all fine. But one of the things that we have done in terms of building our budgets, which we are in the middle of right now with county, is that we have directed our different areas of the organization to include a three point five percent cola. I know that's a slightly different approach than what Mr. Burton has shared with me. The city is still working your way through that. We also send out direction to everyone who's presenting their budgets to our county commissioners to incorporate that fixed cost of the three point five percent cola. But to produce to the fullest extent possible, what we call a status quo budget, particularly for their operations and maintenance, their O and M costs. So there's been a couple of items that have come forward today here that have been requests for percentage increases. And the way we are handling that is that the county commissioners are having presentations of all their budgets from different departments and elected officials. They are listening to those presentations. And we will have, as Mr. Burton phrased it, he phrased it as a wrap-up, we will have a final work session with the commissioners where they will consider those requests for additional expenditures. And they will either approve them or deny them at that time.
You bet. Thank you.
Just wanted to explain.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, Mr. Burton, when we when that interlocal agreement is completed, hopefully before the end of this fiscal year, this will reflect the sixty thousand dollars that we had budgeted FY twenty-four for this office. So the funding won't be in, I mean, there's no previous allocation then for what we had budgeted FY twenty-four.
We'll pick up roughly the fifty percent contribution from each organization with our new budget. Any other questions for Officer Arturo? Or Manager Burton? Commissioners and fire companies? The media system runs a fireball.